Thank you, Dan. I'll call to order the Village of Oregon Board meeting for Monday, November 6, 2023. First item, roll call, or item two, roll call.
Beschin?
Here.
Kirchdorfer?
Here.
Manke?
Here.
McDaniel?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Van Kampen?
Here.
And Beal is absent this evening.
Thank you. Item three, approval of October 16, 2023 Village Board Meeting Minutes. Looking for a motion to approve. Tom and Jason, corrections, comments? Hearing then, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four, public appearances, comments, communications. Public comment, this part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Board members may discuss procedural matters relating to the information, such as whether the information should be directed to staff, referred to committee, or placed on our future board agenda, or if board members may not expand their discussion beyond such procedural matters. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. We have one registered speaker, and that is Jill Ellis, representing the Friends of Oregon Sculpture Garden. Please.
Hello. My name is Jill Ellis. I'm at 280 Eagle Drive in Oregon, speaking on behalf of the Friends of Oregon Sculpture Garden Incorporated, nonprofit organization. Over the past summer, the village board decided to sell the land at 249 North Main Street to North Point Development for $1. North Point Development proposed developing affordable housing and creating a three-quarter acre park on the hilltop portion of this property. It's now our understanding that the village plans to reacquire ownership of the three-quarter acre hilltop area of 249 North Main Street to create a community park, once North Point has finalized their financing arrangements for building on the remaining land. The Friends of Oregon Sculpture Garden will be delighted if the three-quarter acre hilltop portion of land containing historic trees and opening on Main Street will indeed be turned into a community park. However, we're concerned that we don't see 249 North Main Street listed in the five-year Park and Rec Plan under the section on new parks shown on page 925 of the September 18, 2023 Village Board Packet. In fact, 249 North Main Street wasn't listed anywhere in the new plan in terms of proposal of a park, aside from a positive comment on page 996 of that packet. We're aware from discussions with staff over the past few years that new parks must be designated in the Park and Rec Plan in order to go forward with land acquisition and funding. Therefore, we ask that discussion of the village's plan to acquire the 249 North Main Street land and create a community park there be added to the agenda of the next village board meeting, and that the creation of a park on this site be formally recognized in the five-year Park and Rec Plan. Finally, we ask that the village include the Friends of Oregon Sculpture Garden in planning and development of the new park. We urge you to take advantage of the experience, passion, and funds that could be contributed by our members and many volunteers. We believe that we can relieve much of the work for the park's creation and maintenance from the already stretched Public Works Department. Vandewalen Associates Comprehensive Study on Reuse of the 249 North Main Street Property last year showed that the majority of Oregon residents wanted the land to be used for passive recreation. According to an October 21, 2022 article in the Oregon Observer, feedback from the public workshop and surveys showed that participating residents placed an emphasis on numerous interests, such as preserving mature trees, addressing stormwater management issues, and using the land for green or open space. Establishment of the Oregon Sculpture Garden Park will meet the goals expressed in the RFP and provide wonderful benefits to the whole community. Our children and grandchildren will appreciate this unique central park in the heart of our town. Please include this statement in the next village board packet. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments? Jenna Jacobson, village board alumni.
That's true. I haven't been on this side of the table, though. It's pretty exciting. Hello, everyone. My name is Jenna Jacobson. I'm the state representative for the 43rd Assembly District, which includes the Village of Oregon. Just stopped by to not only say hello, but I come bearing gifts. I have the latest version of the Wisconsin Blue Book for 2023-24, and I have one for all of our board members here tonight. So they're, well, if you're a nerd like me, they're interesting reading about history that has occurred over throughout Wisconsin's history, not only just the past year, but since its inception, a little bit of fun facts about people in the legislature this term, and also good nighttime reading materials should you need help falling asleep. So for anybody out watching online or in the audience who would like a copy of the Blue Book, you're certainly welcome to reach out to me at my website, RepJennaJacobson.com, and we can happily get you a copy. I have hundreds. I'd love to help you out with all your nighttime reading needs. But yeah, so if you're good with it, I'll pass these out to you all, and thank you.
Add that to my library.
Yes. Looking forward to this. It's autographed.
Autographed? Wow.
By Mark, too. You and Mark.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenna.
Thank you, Jenna. Anyone else for public comments? Okay, moving on. Then item four, the presentation from Village Financial Advisor Ellers regarding the 2023 sewer rate study and recommended sewer rates.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Truputuski with Ellers. You've seen me here before. Actually, a few months ago, we went through your financial management plan, and we looked at the utilities. So the first few slides in here are actually from that financial management plan, but whenever we do a sewer rate or water rate study, we do a long-range cash flow analysis, too. So I wanted to start off with that. So again, why we do this, we look at your historical, five-year historical, because as you'll recall, utilities are very capital-intensive and take a lot of maintenance that can be very volatile through the years, so we don't want to just look at one year. We take a look at that five-year history. Then we make future projections and evaluate your O&amp;M, your depreciation, and in the case of water, it would be your pilot payment. And then we look at your capital improvement projects and determine what can be funded with debt, if you can use cash on hand, and then we look at the rate impact. As you'll recall, we looked at the historical sewer rate performance, and we noted that you can look at a revenue requirement and look at it at a cash basis or a utility basis, and either way that we looked at it, your rates were not adequate. Looking at your historical financial indicators, you do have reserves. Our target is six months of next year's O&amp;M plus 100% of your debt payment. So you do have sufficient reserves, and with that, with our plan, we do use your cash on hand to reduce the debt issues that we recommend. And then our concerns are of your aging system, and again, that's why we are here, for your treatment plant upgrades and lift station upgrade. Looking at your future capital items, your current undepreciated value of the system is 14.8 million. Looking at your 10-year capital improvement plan, you are looking to add 46.1 million of assets, which is a 211% increase. And then we note here that we are using that additional cash to downsize the debt, so the bottom line of cash that is not included in that 3.52, that would just reduce the line that has revenue debt. This is the future cash flow analysis, and as we talked about last time I was here, we are spreading that large increase over three years, and we modeled that around your water rate increase. So for 2024, we are recommending a smaller increase because the water increase will take an effect for that, and then two larger increases after. So you may question, well, we know what percentage increase that we need. Why do not, why don't we just add that percentage onto our current rate structure? When you have large increases like this, the users of the system use it differently. So those who cost the cost should pay the cost. So we look at your different classifications, and you also have the Oak Hill Correctional Center that you need to consider and make sure they're paying their proportionate share. Your village engineers determined the fixed charge, so normally you have eight-meter charge, and then there's an equivalency on that. With them, they base this on an agreed discharge limit equivalent at 695 users, so when we're developing their fixed charge, it was based off of the engineer's recommendation for that. Then they also determine that proportionate share of the treatment plant facility upgrade as well as the Richards Road lift station. So when we look at setting new rates and not just adding a percentage on, we look at that revenue requirement that we've talked about already, where you are looking at what your revenues are compared to what your expenses are to determine what rate adjustment you need. Then we do a cost of service where we are looking at allocating that revenue requirement amongst those different users. And then we design the rates for each of those classes to meet the revenue needs of this system. So looking at the revenue requirement, if you look at it to recover your O&amp;M, so we're looking at a cash basis, we have your operating and maintenance, your current and future debt payments, as well as cash-funded capital. And then we determine all of that and what your new amounts are. You'll notice here under the capital costs that are very important, so we have isolated your current debt, then we have the new debt that is not the Oak Hill portion, and a new debt that is the Oak Hill portion, and then your cash-funded capital, and that comes into play when we're determining those rates. When we look at the revenue requirement that you need versus the current rates, you can see that they aren't sufficient, and it's about like 1.4 million. That needs to be, the rates need to be adjusted to meet those, the revenue requirement needs. We take that revenue requirement, and that is allocated amongst the different functions. So you have your volumetric, you have a fixed charge, you have your VOD, your suspended solids, and then we have the Oak Hill portion separated out, and we're determining what portion of those dollars need to be allocated in a certain way, and that's what determines your rates, your fixed charge, your volumetric, and then those high-strength users. So looking at the rate design, we had to break this out into three portions. The first part is your O&amp;M, your current debt, your cash-funded capital less any other revenue sources, so netting that off, and that is allocated to all customers, so that's non-Oak Hill and Oak Hill. Then taking the new debt portion for the treatment plant and that Richards lift station, we had to allocate out what is the non-Oak Hill portion and to add on to the rates. So these rates are added on to the rates you saw before that are all users, and then we had to separate out Oak Hill's new portion. And the reason we aren't adding that in like we do with the non-Oak Hill is because they do have the opportunity to prepay their portion of the debt, so we don't want to include it in their normal rates. So adding those together, we have what our proposed rates are. We have what your current is, what the cost of service determines, and then what we are proposing as our test-year rates. And because we want to phase that in, we have the proposed 2024, 25, and 26 rates broken This slide will show the rate impact of 2024 only, so you're looking at about a 12% increase on average. And then the next slide, this would be that whole planned period, so for those three years, what the rate impact would be. So again, our recommendations, the plan, as we went through before, we're trying to minimize the rate adjustments that are needed by using cash on hand to reduce the amount of debt that you need to issue, and then we're phasing in the rate increases that you need to structure around the water increase. We mentioned your connection fees have not been adjusted, that you do plan to update your study, and our plan does not include any new users. So when we're looking at this plan and we're looking at increases, it should be, continue to be evaluated, because you could have new users, things could change, prices. As you go through the project, prices can change, so you want to continuously look at this and not just implement what is recommended on there. One other thing that I do want to mention is when we are, when we came up with these rates, it is based off of a 30-year clean water fund loan, so should that be less than the 30 years, obviously, the rate increases would need to be adjusted.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you, Lisa. Okay, so I think with this information, if we don't have any sort of general consensus that we should go, ask the village staff to go to the next step? Sorry about that. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item five, approval of vouchers in the amount of $1,495,159.23. Looking for motion? Carleen and Amanda, this will be your roll call vote.
Van Kampen?
I'm sorry. Were there any questions?
Yeah, I was going to say you want any questions?
None? Sorry, got ahead there. All right, thank you. Go ahead.
All right. Van Kampen?
Yes.
Manke?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Beschin?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Thank you. Item six, consent agenda. Motion to approve each item as presented. I do have one minor revision under item C, the village president nominations. In working on this through the last few months, I made an error in that Julie Goodmanis had requested to be reappointed, but I had neglected to do so, and Tim Higgins was actually going to take place on this committee. When I discovered my error, I contacted Tim, who's with us tonight, who was gracious enough to give up the seat so I could appoint Julie. So I think it's worthwhile to mention our appointees, as much difficulty as we get appointees, as a matter of recognition. So tonight, we'll be appointing Michelle Mansky, Alyssa Rosner, Mark Miller, Marilyn McDoll, and of course, Lynn McDaniel as trustee. Because of process, and I checked with Martin today, we'll have to make the appointment for Julie at the next meeting. That's all I have on that item. So we're looking then for a motion of second for the consent agenda. Amanda and Tom, further comments, questions?
The motion is to prove as presented with.
Yes.
Commented.
With the change I outlined, I'll say.
And it was Peterson and who?
Tom. Yep. Any further discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you all very much.
Phil, is it okay if we skip 7A, 1 through 5 right now? Derek's talking with the developer right now and might have some additional information.
Okay, without objection, we'll move to 7B, 1, Public Safety Committee. Resolution number 23-42 directing the street superintendent to obtain, erect, and maintain traffic signs establishing a four-way stop control intersection at the intersection of Drummond Drive and Prairie Grass Road pursuant to Section 7.05 of the Village Code of Ordinances. We have a recommendation from the Public Safety Committee and a staff recommendation to approve as presented. We have a motion. Jason and Amanda, discussion?
Sure. So I'll just say, we discussed this at the Public Safety Committee. We got some good feedback from people at the hearing. There were some emails, which I believe are in the packet today, too. There seemed to be consensus that, to switch this to a four-way stop as opposed to switching, because right now, there's stop signs on going one way and not the other, and if we switched those so that it was on opposite streets, we figured that would be way too confusing for people. People were worried about traffic racing down Drummond Drive, and so a stop sign there is necessary, and I think, you know, just making it a four-way stop was easier.
It's continuing to stop sign on Drummond Drive.
Yes.
Yes.
And adding them.
And adding it on Prairie, yeah, it's just to.
Right.
I'll just add that there were, I think, like 150 letters sent out to people who lived in the area, and so some people did comment, and so overall, the consensus was for a four-way.
Okay. Anybody else? We have a motion of second?
You do have a motion and a second?
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item E, unfinished business, items for discussion and/or possible action. A community engagement plan for senior center facility planning. We had a memo in the packet from Martin, Rachel, Leanne, maybe others. Who would like to speak?
I'll have Rachel start us off.
I'll start us off. When the new senior center proposed project was in front of the board, September 18, there was the board's recommendation that we move forward and create a community engagement plan, so we have been working on that. We bring that back to you tonight with opportunities to engage several different segments of the community in providing information for this proposed project. Every, well, starting with, there was a presentation to the Planning Commission last week, which mimicked the presentation that you all received in September. We're planning to meet with various community groups that had indicated an interest originally in maybe somehow piggybacking it in this process with this building so that we can talk to them further. We want to hear from the community, several different segments of the community. There's some targeted groups in the community that we'd like to meet with, and those include the current Council on Aging, current volunteers at the senior center, current users of the senior center, but also just groups of the public that may not at all be involved in the senior center. And this plan sets out workshops that they could attend, evenings, weekends. Our goal is to capture a variety of kinds of information from the public. We want to know everything from what are they envision in terms of design and aesthetics from that to what kinds of barriers could they foresee that they might encounter trying to access and use a building. Also, naming, branding, senior center, if the senior center is changing, it might be a great opportunity to also change the name of the center. We want to explore that with people. And of course, just programming preferences. If you're building a new facility, how do people want to be able to use that facility? So we hope to gather that information. Additionally, if there's the potential to add a community gymnasium to this project, we would like to engage people who might not otherwise pay a lot of attention to senior center planning, but might be very interested in a community gymnasium, so there's kind of a separate section within this proposal about capturing public input about the community gymnasium. And then additionally, we have some opportunities to gather other data just because of other things that are going on with the park plan underway and senior center reaccreditation surveys that were being completed earlier this year. There's, there will be some helpful information in those as well. So we've tried to put together a plan that is outlined in that memo that tells you just what we would like to do, and we'd like your input on whether you see that as a sufficient and good plan, or whether you have some suggestions for us.
Okay, let's get a motion on the table first of all. Tom and Amanda. And was there someone else that wanted to add in before we go? Okay, thanks. So comments, questions, discussion? Amanda?
So I know one of the things that we're trying to do is look at everything through sustainability lenses, through DEI lenses, things like that, and I'm wondering if there's any part of the plan specifically to reach out to, I know you, you know, people, you're trying to draw on everybody who may not be involved in senior center, but you know, people of different races and, you know, like, is there a plan to get people that may not be able to participate through their normal methods, I guess?
I would say for the, you know, for the community gym specifically, we felt like, because that's a larger population that we want to hear from, folks that wouldn't otherwise identify themselves as being interested in planning a new senior center, leaning on resources like the school district and their email blasting to do, spread that far and wide and ask people to share with their friends. I think we would probably, because that'll likely be an online survey, try to post that in kind of a multitude of places. It'll, it'll be not terribly long and probably similar to like our park survey and how we distributed that, but trying to engage those other already captive audiences to share that a little further. One thing we talked about with the workshops, because we're hoping this is kind of more of a hands-on, like charrette-type thing where there's stickers and boards and markers and, you know, raise your hand for, you know, which building facade you like the most or anything like that. We think having those at the senior center is really important to have people come in the door and, you know, trying to advertise it to the public and welcome them into the senior center and kind of have a sense of what we're dealing with right now and the need for the new senior center. But yeah, open to any and all suggestions that you guys have to help get the word out, or if you think there's, you know, a different method. You know, we haven't gotten into the meat of what these workshops will look like, but there's a potential we could try to do something that's a Zoom meeting or online. I think there's just a lot that we hope to accomplish in those meetings. We want to make sure that none of that is lost in kind of the digital translation.
Carleen?
Did you have more?
No.
Sorry.
I was just wondering, this is an ambitious plan, and I'm just wondering who's coordinating it, the.
Yes. We'll be, continue to work with our owner reps from Tri-North to help largely their architect Andrew and then Pat Stern, who you guys met a couple weeks ago, who's kind of their marketing communications guy. So we'll work with them to, you know, find all the images and draft all the posters and things like that, and with the workshops, they are going to be very cut and paste. They'll be very similar materials. It'll just be, you know, five copies of the same board or something like that. So I think a lot of the work will be done on the front end. This will all be after the holidays, so we'll kind of spend the next couple of months working on that. But then the survey, you know, these all don't have to be simultaneous, too. I think we want to let people know there's a, you know, community gymnasium survey that's coming out in May, so stay tuned for that. If you'd like to be on our email list, you know, sign up here or newsletter, things like that.
All right. Great. Thanks.
Lynn and Amanda?
So I know that you can't ask everybody, and so my suggestion is just a suggestion, if you choose not to go forward with it, totally fine. But while I was looking at this, I was reminded that this is our, one of our downtown, going to be one of our downtown hubs, right? And I'm really excited that it's staying downtown and that it's going to bring activity there. So I wonder if it's worth having some listening sessions or. So I wonder if it's worth having some listening sessions or feedback from those downtown business owners, just to see what they might be looking for, how it could fit into our kind of downtown master plan, if that's the way that things go. But I'd I think it would be really beneficial to see if there's ways we can tie it to people coming to downtown and going to the coffee shops and doing all those things. So maybe there's some voices there that we could pull on.
Okay, Amanda.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, are you doing like, like a survey kind of thing, too, where people can fill it out online? Did I hear you mention that, that that was?
So at this point, that would just be focused on the community gym, these workshops. Like I said, there's a lot of this hands-on. There will be some surveys and and at the workshops, there'll be some like worksheets you fill out on your own and turn them in before you leave, and then also more interactive activities. So at this point, we've just kind of envisioned that to be in person, but we haven't written anything yet. So if you think it's important to have an option, like I said, that's online or on Zoom or some kind of survey, it's just, you know, how do we kind of marry all that information back together with what's collected in the workshops?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about people who may not have time to attend a workshop but still want to have input in some way, like, you know, like, I know in the past we've done like Q R codes or links that go out with billing for property taxes for our utilities. Now that we have envelopes with paper, you know, like that comes in the mail page, like, you know, we have a little more space that we could put a Q R code or link or something just as a a way for to reach those people that just have time to answer some questions or input in that way. That was all.
Tom. I guess I see a lot of connection between this, the downtown master plan that we are going to be, and I guess it's how are we going to bring these, you're going to be asking questions, and then we're going to go be asking questions again, or is it going to be walking sessions and all those things with them? So it's there's going to be a complexity in bringing two planning processes going on at the same time. So how we coordinate that, we might somehow look at some of that. I know there's a paragraph in here, a relationship to the master plan, but I think that there might be a bigger tie to it than just sort of looking, just acknowledging it. I think it might be actually be more active than that.
What else? Okay, we have a motion second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Ready to jump back now?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Back to item seven, then Amanda. Okay, I'm going to, because of potential conflict, I'm going to recuse and abstain on this item.
Yeah, so, okay, this is number seven, the reports of committees. Seven A is the Planning Commission. Number one is the annexation agreement between the Glenn and Michelle Hofer Living Trust and the Village of Oregon.
Amanda, sorry if Derek chimes in here.
Yeah, do you want to do that an overall thing, or do you want us to get a motion?
I think from the start, let's just go ahead and get a big picture and talk about what's going on here.
Okay, let's do that.
So this is a relatively straightforward but also complicated deal because it includes a number of moving parts, right? So first of all, we've got the annexation of lands into the village. As part of that, we have an annexation agreement with the landowners as well as the petition itself, and then the actual ordinance, which actually brings in the property. After that, we have a resolution that is approving the final plat. So a portion of the property that's coming into the village is going to be subdivided in order to be developed. A portion of it's going to remain kind of ag-holding agricultural land. Following that, we'll actually have the actual zoning of those properties so that when the time comes for development, that they can actually be developed. And then finally, we have a development agreement with the developer that prescribes what types of public improvements the developer must construct in order to serve the the development that's going to occur on those planted lands. So it's a little bit of like dominoes, right? Because we have to start all the way back at the annexation agreement, leads into an annexation ordinance, and then everything else that follows after the fact. So staff has been diligently working over the last couple of weeks trying to bring everything to a head. I know that the developer is here in the crowd, and he was able to take a look at some of those agreements, but some of them were a little bit last minute. So I know that there's a question about the particular language in some of them, including like the development agreement. One of the concerns that we have is that we don't have signatures on an annexation agreement from them right now. And so we'd be a little bit cautious about the Village Board approving an annexation ordinance, which is effective upon enactment without actually having an annexation agreement in place, which prescribes certain responsibilities for the developer to do once he brings that property in. And so I think the question for you right now is, does it make sense to just table this for until the next meeting in order to give the developer time to flesh out any additional questions that they have, get us the required signed agreements, so that we know that when we're when the Village Board is approving these agreements, that we have the final signed-off versions in front of us, and that everything's ready to go once you approve and fill in candy, execute those agreements. Questions?
So we would, you're you're asking us if we should table all five of these, or are there any pieces that we can do today that would help for table?
Well, and that's a great question. And part of the problem is that because it is a little bit like dominoes and that everything flows from the annexation. And so the main one, the primary one that we would want executed at this time is that annexation agreement, and we don't have execution right now. So we ought not to tip over the dominoes until we have everything in place. Now, with that being said, procedurally, you know, Martin and I talked about this this morning and then a little bit here this this evening, but it gets a little bit procedurally complicated. Theoretically, I suppose you could approve everything conditioned upon the approval of that annexation agreement, maybe withhold the the actual ordinance itself, and so that everything is contingent upon at some point in the future, the actual approval of these other agreements. But again, procedurally, it gets me a little bit of a headache. You want to make sure that the motion language lines up, and ultimately, the record gets a little bit muddy, but it's certainly a possibility.
Okay, let's start Jason first.
So I I guess I will move to table all of these motions until our next meeting, when hopefully the paper, all of the paperwork's in order to keep things. That's the motion. I shouldn't speak to it till that hurts.
Okay, let's have a second, and then I'll get to Carleen's question. Lynn, second.
I'll second.
Okay.
So Lynn's second.
Go ahead, Carleen.
So I guess this is a question for the Hofers, and we kind of ran into this once before when we were approving things, that if we didn't get them done, that was going to put a, it was going to mean a long time before the next step in the development happened. And I'm just curious about what that timeline is looking like for you at this one and how quickly this can take place, because we meet again in two weeks. Is two weeks is like, okay. Is that, can I ask him that question?
Yeah.
Please come up and, yeah. And state your name for the record.
Yeah, Glenn Hofer. Yeah, it it's it's a challenge. I I've got a window where I need to get the work done across the golf course when the golf course is closed. And let me kind of give you a little bit more history.
Can you pull the microphone close?
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
That's better.
Yeah, so let me give you some more history. So one of the the big things, which I think is a positive, is we're putting sanitary sewer gravity flow across the golf course to connect to Lexington, which I think is a a long-term benefit to the village, because it's it's going to be gravity versus having a pump station on phase three. And then with that, down the road, the village wants a water main loop to Lexington because there's kind of a shortage of water at the homes on Lexington. And that'll, I'm not doing it now, but Jeff Rao and I agree that, you know, we can work it out down the road. So I think we, the village, of course, wants agreements that, and and what, for the most part, what Jeff Rao and I agreed to is, we'll grant an easement on the golf course now to, you know, so that if I ever sell a property and go away or whatever, the village can still get that water main loop done in the future. So on the business side of it, we're nervous about developing it now because with interest rates high, homes aren't selling like they were two years ago. But I've got a couple builders, Tim O'Brien Homes in Eltira, that want the lots. They want them in in June. But that could all go away if we keep putting a hold on it. And if we do that, there's a good cha, I'm not going to take the risk and spend, you know, a few million, a couple million dollars in infrastructure and sit on homes or sit on lots for a long term. So.
How much difference does two weeks make?
There's there's a, there's an urgency, and I'm sure the village sees it as it's the developer's problem, but I just won't develop it if if we keep dragging this on. It's that simple.
So my question is, how much difference does two two weeks make?
It's, 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 I've been trying to get a, and and we can, I've been trying to get a pre-con set up for the last month. And the other thing we need is a notice to proceed from the village to to get the D N R permits for extending sewer and water. And they're out at least six weeks, and we haven't gotten that yet either. And I don't see us getting to set, I guess we're not going to get us, if we wait two more weeks, we're not going to be able to set up a pre-con, but that that's kind of, you know, I don't think the village will will set up a pre-con without, you know, these approvals. And, yeah, I I apologize for not signing it, but I I basically, you know, just looked at it today, and time I get it signed and notarized, I just have enough time to get that done today. So.
Glenn, is there anything in the annexation agreement that you just, you want changed or amended?
Um, no, I feel pretty good about the annexation agreement. I've I've looked at that. Derek came out, you know, during the meeting, and we looked at it together. I I feel comfortable with that. I'm still looking at the developer's agreement, and for the most part, I I feel pretty good about all the agreements. But for sure, the the annexation agreement, I feel good about. But I just, I don't have a signed copy with me today, but if it got approved, you know, at this board meeting tonight, I I will, I will get us, you know, get it signed and notarized this week.
You look like you're thinking. Yeah. Let's give him a minute.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it it just comes down, and I apologize because, as Derek said, we, you know, this is sort of straightforward, but it's incredibly complicated, and it takes a while to button all of these things up. And one of the spots that we were concerned about was if if Glenn had a problem with some language in the annexation agreement itself, but it sounds like he didn't, he don't. It's just that we just don't have a signature. So it really comes down to level of risk that you you want to take on. You know, you'll approve, if you approve the annexation ordinance tonight, that's that's done, that's definitive, and that's sort of your trump card with everything. You know, you can kind of hold annexation up, but you, you know, you start to become on the clock with some of these other things once you're, once you're annexed. But it sounds like, I think there's probably enough, you know, if we leave this meeting and suddenly there's a lot of issues with the annexation agreement, there's certainly some other cards that I think we could play to to hold up the development, but I don't think it'll come to that point, from what I understand. And we've worked, obviously, we've worked with Glenn on two previous phases as well. So I think, you know, again, it's the level of risk. I think we could approve each of these tonight, and it may be a non-issue moving forward.
Well, my my question then is, you all right? Yeah. So if Mark, I mean, I I'm all right with a certain level of risk, so, and it sounds like we're all in general agreement. So the next step would be if we're all right getting, that that's going to get signed between the meetings, basically, is what I'm hearing. I can just withdraw my motion would be the easiest way to do that than we could.
So, yeah, what's, I guess I'm going to ask, what's your level of comfort as board members with, you know, like, we, again, we've dealt with Mr. Hofer before on other stuff. I'm I'm pretty okay with it, but.
I've watched the development.
I'm so sorry. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. You started, go ahead.
Well, I've watched it out my kitchen window for the last two years, so I'm very familiar and have been pretty impressed with the the, just how it's gone. So, you know, I'm I'm comfortable with that. I don't think that he's going to skip town on us or anything like that. I mean, so I'm, you know, just looking at the 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 commitment that's been made already in in the Autumn Ridge development, I'm I'm very comfortable. Of course, you did not make it a one-story house next to my house. I just.
Apologize for that.
I better like those people.
I guess there was a mention of a conditional approval. Where would where would that fall within this, these five motions?
I think at a minimum, it makes sense to make the approval of the ordinance, the second item on the agenda, as conditioned upon the execution and delivery of the annexation agreement, item number one.
Wait, they're asking something here.
Yeah, so you have, you do have a motion on the floor, so it belongs to the body. So if you want to either vote that down or all agree to withdraw, but I want to hear everyone say they agree to withdraw, that, because that's how I roll.
Is that how that works? I I agree to withdraw.
Everybody agrees? All right.
Yes, I'm good with that. All right, yeah, we've all agreed, we'll withdraw the tabling motion. So then we would be looking at a a conditional.
So you can, all the staff recommendation motions on there are fine, except for number two, you would say a motion to approve conditioned upon execution. Execution and delivery of a signed annexation agreement.
Executed and signed.
And are you good with that, Mr. Hofer? Then you'd just agree to sign that annexation agreement ASAP.
And and I don't appreciate that because I, you know, I think one of the reasons the the previous phases go well is I get a commitment to people to buy the lot so we can, you know, we just don't have vacant lots for the next five years. And it's, I think, a benefit to the village. It's definitely works better for for us as well. So and we're, yes, I'm 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 okay with it, yes.
Okay.
So then, just a point of order, so then do we need a motion on each one of these?
We do. I was told that before, so we'll just take them one at a time, but number two, when we get there, would be a condition, conditional upon the signing of the of number one, the annexation agreement.
Okay.
What, uh.
Okay, so we're on number one, the annexation agreement.
So hang on just a second. Carleen wanted to know what page they're on.
Fifty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's going to look at that. Okay, so I guess I need a motion for number one there.
I'll I'll motion number one to replace my other one.
Okay. And Tom, seconds, so.
To approve the annexation agreement.
Yes. Okay, any questions on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, okay. Let's see, then.
Restem or conditional?
Just, just number two. So that's.
I can do that.
All right.
I'll make a mo, a con, a motion to for a conditional annexation ordinance dependent.
No, no.
Start over. So you want candy.
Yeah, please do.
How about this motion? How about a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-three twelve, an ordinance providing the direct annexation of a portion of the Town of Oregon to the Village of Oregon, so the second addition to the Autumn Ridge, conditioned upon a fully conditioned upon a fully executed and delivered annexation agreement?
Do we want a deadline on that? That uh, delivery? Like by Friday?
That's up to you.
Uh, yes, I want a deadline on it. And that way, we're not, none of us are dragging our feet anywhere.
It looks like Mr. Hofer.
By Friday, do you, Friday, what month are we in, November?
Twenty-twenty-three.
Twenty-twenty-three. Got it.
Okay, so.
I have a motion.
Well, yeah, who's making that motion?
Beshen made it.
Beshen made it. Okay, so who wants a second? Okay, Kirchdorfer is seconding, and any questions on this? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. All right, uh, then the other three are pretty straightforward, one at a time here. Seven A three is a resolution number twenty-three dash forty-one, a resolution conditionally approving the final plat of second addition to Autumn Ridge. Someone want to make that motion? Jason and.
Hey, point of order, Amanda.
Sorry.
I just want to make clear, though, that the approval of these next three are all conditional upon the enactment of an annexation ordinance under sub-two, right?
Okay, do you need that as part of the motion?
Yes, I would prefer that as part of the motion, yes, right? We're not going to prove a final plat for land that's not annexed into the villages, right?
Okay.
So I'll make that move, conditional upon
Okay.
the approval of an annexation of the.
Enactments of an annexation ordinance.
That's the word I'm looking for. Enactment, thank you.
Have you got that, Candy?
I got it.
Okay, Candy has it. Do we have a second? Tom, okay.
So I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mankie and who?
Uh, Kirchdorfer, yeah.
Too many conditional approvals.
Yes, no, you're doing great.
She's the only one that's.
She's working so hard.
Okay, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I didn't hear any opposed, so.
That was number three, right?
Yes, that was number three.
Halfway.
Yes. All right, I'll re- I'll read number four here, seven A four, it, on the agenda is ordinance number twenty-three dash one-three and ordinance adopting a zoning map amendment to establish the SR four, single-family residential, TR six, two-family residential, and RH rural holding zoning districts for tax parcel number zero-four-two slash zero-five-zero-nine dash one-three-one dash nine-seven-two-one dash zero, just in case anybody really wanted to hear all those numbers.
This one does not need anything extra. The condition's already in the ordinance.
Excellent, excellent. Uh, so can I get a motion for that? We got Lynn and we got Carleen.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I didn't hear, see anybody against. All right, and then number five, is this a conditional one or not?
This one does not need to be.
Does not, okay. All right, so I'll just read it out loud for the record. Seven A five is an agreement to undertake development in the plat of second addition to Autumn Ridge, phase three A. Does someone want to make a motion for that? Tom and Lynn, so Kirchdorfer and McDaniel. Any questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Didn't see anybody opposed.
Get to work.
Good work.
Thank you.
Yay. Thanks.
Thank you, village staff, for getting us through that.
Yes, thank you. All right, and that would kick us back to eight B. Thank you. And I'll let I'll let Phil take that one.
Thank you, Amanda. Eight B, twenty-twenty-four draft budget updates.
I'm not going to spend too much time on this, just a couple of minutes, so we uh, got the draft budget in the Observer last Thursday. And then we'll have the public hearing, and if there's any final changes to be made and approval by the board at the next meeting on November twentieth. Since the last meeting, there's just been a few, a couple of changes on page one sixty-one there in the packet. So we did approve, well, we possibly approved the annexation of Autumn Ridge Phase Three, in theory. So assuming that all happens, we do have the ability to take a small levy limit increase when we annex town properties, and that's based on the previous year's town taxes. So it's just a small five-eighty-nine, fifty-nine there that we can add on to the levy. So we've we've done that and adjusted the budget already for that. Now, if it doesn't happen for some reason, we can take it out at the the twentieth. We've talked about the the new senior center agreement in closed session for the last couple of meetings. The budget is adjusted for what we've discussed. We also had health insurance open enrollment end, and we did have a couple of changes that we weren't anticipating. So we included those in. And then there's a couple modifications to some projects, just based on new numbers and and quotes and things like that. One change was in the police department capital firearms cost from sixteen to twenty. Uh, and then Amanda had talked to me about requesting adding sixty thousand in for public transportation feasibility study that the ad hoc committee is working on. And just to verify, Amanda, it was twelve thousand to be paid by the village in the rest grant or the opposite?
No, well, you have it in here correctly.
Okay, okay.
The village would just be twelve thousand, and the rest of that would be paid for by the grant.
Okay.
The numbers, I will caution you, are tentative, like, they could fluctuate a little bit, but it's not going to be a huge fluctuation, and the grant has been submitted, so it's in. Thank you, Elise, for all of your help. Anyway.
I think I think I might have told Elise the opposite way.
Yeah, I don't think I have it in the budget.
So yeah, we'll we'll have to switch that around, but that's fine. So that's in the capital plan, so that would be covered through, you know, any available funds, or if we have to do borrowing, we could do borrowing there. And we'll find out if we we get the grant at some point.
Uh, January, um, and sometime in January, and uh, I've been told it's likely because there's a large pot of money and not many municipalities take advantage of it, so it's likely. Not guaranteed, but likely.
Uh, and then one project in the water utility budget, they're doing a skater, SCADA computer project to replace that system, and felt it was also timely to replace the backup system for it as well, which would double the cost of that project. That will be covered with water utility cash. Uh, one small change to personnel, Public Works Department is requesting to promotion for Mac Dillman. He's one of our Public Works crew persons. He's a crew person one, and they're requesting to promote him to crew person two. Uh, and so that's about a two thousand dollar impact, and that gets a little bit spread over the utilities as well as the general fund. And then we also received the final village assessment numbers, and so I've made some adjustments to the property tax rate calculations in the packet. And any any changes in the the full budget document, in the narrative part that are in red, are things that have changed since the last meeting. And then between now and the next ten, fourteen days, just any final refinements, double checking, triple checking, everything. There is, the tax increment calculation still needs to be calculated, but we need all of the other tax and jurisdiction levies to complete that one. And then I know at the last meeting, we talked about putting together a column for the Oregon Observer, talking about local government budgeting. I'm working on that, and I'll have that for you to look at at the next meeting. But we should be ready to approve the budget. The only other thing I was going to mention is just the property tax rate calculation, which is on page one sixty-seven of the packet. So you can see it on that page, just the changes, since we have the final assessed value, just the change to the assessed value. The tax rate's still projected to go down about four and a half percent. Uh, and then I updated the rest of the, that property tax rate effect on various properties. That whole section there, and I just gave a few more examples of how property tax rates will, for the village portion of property taxes, will be will be impacted. And we talked quite a bit about that one of the previous meetings, too. So yeah, that's it. Everything is is coming together, and it's just quality control at this point, and approval at the next meeting.
Thank you, Martin. Uh, Lynn?
I just have a quick question about the public hearing coming up.
Yeah.
So forgive me, because this is my first village board public hearing. If someone was unable to attend on November twentieth and they wanted to give us their input, would they need to directly email us in order to get that feedback? Is there a different way that they submit that feedback to you? Uh, how would someone go about doing that?
Yeah, if they wanted to, uh, certainly anybody can email the board at any time if they have comments. If they want, if they have written comments that they would like to get into the packet ahead of the meeting, uh, I believe the policy is, it's it's that, it's the packet deadline, I believe.
Yeah, I think it is.
So they just have to have it to staff by the packet deadline so that we can get it in there. And I think.
I think it's nine a.m.
I think what we've done, too, in in some circumstances, is if we get it after the fact, we'll put it in the packet after it's published. We might not get to it right away, but we usually end up getting it in there eventually.
Great.
Yep.
Go on else. Okay, uh, I guess there's no action needed, just the outline as Martin has talked about tonight. So, thank you. Item nine, new business items for discussion, possible action aid, resolution number twenty-three dash thirty-two, approving the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-eight agreement for assessment services from my accurate appraisal, and we had a very nice detail from Peggy Higgin, deputy clerk in the packet. Do we have anything to add to this?
I got nothing unless you have any questions.
Okay, well, I know we've, seems like the village staff and Minister Happy with it, Amanda, please.
Uh, yeah, so um, I I love all the detail in here and all the information about the Badger Books. I watched the video.
This is assessment.
Sorry, this is assessment. We're on the wrong thing, never mind. But it's but it's coming up, coming up. Okay, we'll get there, we'll get there.
Never mind, duly noted. So let's look for a motion on this one. Uh, Jason and Carleen, further discussion. Hearing none, all those on paper indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item nine B. Civic plus master service agreement, the statement will work for new website development. Again, we had a nice memo from Candy.
Nothing.
Exciting.
Yeah, right.
I got for you. If anybody has any questions, I can try to answer them.
I do, I would comment that Pittsburgh, as Candy mentioned, uses them, and I spend some time on their site, and it is very user-friendly. So I'm optimistic this will turn out great. Uh, Amanda?
Okay, I'm on the right item this time.
This isn't one.
No.
No, it's not. No, no, I know. That's what I'm saying. I'm I'm paying attention here. I've got the right item.
Okay, we'll let, proceed with caution.
Yeah. The uh, I I love this idea, and I see it saving us, like, a lot of money down the road, even though there's an expenditure and a learning curve upfront how to use it, but by automating a lot of the things that our staff has to take the time to do. I want people to understand that, yes, it's an expenditure, but this is going to save us a lot of money down the road, so.
Agreed.
That sounds like a motion to approve.
Yeah.
And Tom, second, further discussion.
I did go on, I went out.
Oh, sorry, Tom.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Tom.
I went out to about, it's like, probably six or seven of the different sites that were listed there, most of them local and so forth. You know, there is a consistency in in the look in the presentation, which you would expect because they are all municipalities, and there's there's going to be some logical
Yep.
uh, organization to it. I thought the Verona page was a little bit nicer than the Pittsburgh one, but they listed Pittsburgh as the example, so.
Did you get a chance to visit some prairies? I mean, I don't want to be like.
I did go on, I did go on some.
Some prairies, yeah. I mean, they are really in the business of government and professional, so I think it's going to be a very good move.
Carleen?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I look forward to the time when we have, you know, some some ways that public can be more interactive with committees and things through there as well, and so I'm I'm excited.
Miranda?
Are, is there a point where we'll be allowed to give some input and to design and things like that?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure how that's all laid out, but that was one of the initial questions we asked upfront, because I think it's also very important for each department to kind of see that. So as we get into the design part of that, I will make sure and maybe show you a, you know, a test version or see if you can get into the test environment.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item nine C. Resolution number twenty-three dash thirty-nine to combine municipal wards and assigned polling locations for voting purposes in the twenty-twenty-four election information, recommendation is to approve as presented. Candy, if you have anything.
I think Amanda has a question.
No, I'm on the right.
Okay.
Yeah, so so I love this, and, you know, I like the idea. You had the the poll Badger Books video, which was really great, and I'm wondering if there's a way in conjunction with this that we can also push out that information.
I'm sure people will probably get sick of watching it, because I plan on pushing it out quite a bit, so.
Uh, Carleen?
This is peripherally related. Today is Election Heroes Day, and so I just want to call out the election heroes in this room who worked the elections every time, and in particular Candy, who coordinates things, and just say, at a time when elections are under heightened scrutiny and election heroes are under duress a lot. I just, I just have nothing but the highest commendations for the folks in this village.
Okay, so let's look for a motion to approve this item. Jason and Lynn, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item, pardon me.
I just want to say thank you to Carleen and to the board, but I also want to say it's not just me, it's our election workers, and I couldn't do it without the staff in the clerks department and the finance department, police department. I mean, we're all involved in elections, so thanks.
Thank you. Ninety, PFA settlement agreements in consideration for the village. A recommendation to motion is to opt out of the settlements. Let's get a motion on table here. Amanda? Anyone? Tom? All right, um, who wants to run with this? Derek, I bet.
So both Martin and I have included extensive memos in the packet, but I wanted to first start and see if there are any questions, and then if not, we can maybe talk big picture stuff. But first, are there questions about what we're dealing with here? No, no issues?
Well, I just want to, can I just make a comment? I I think it's awesome that when seventy-one percent of private and public wells are being, are testing positive for high concentrations of PFAS that ours aren't, is pretty, pretty awesome.
Do you want a fuller description, Phil?
It doesn't sound like the board wants one.
Good.
I guess not. Excused.
We trust you.
Yes, right. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Derek. Item E, consider authorizing the finance director to initiate a process for a one-million-dollar in short-term borrowing for the library project to cover expenses before receiving congressionally-directed spending grant. We're looking for a motion to approve. Uh, Carleen, Amanda, who wants to run with this one?
Uh, I can just give a brief explanation, and I'm happy to explain in more depth for anybody that wasn't on the board during this process. Um, but we have a memorandum of understanding that explains the relationship between the library and village board, and, uh, details a number of project items, including the financing of the library project. When, uh, the library went out to bid, the village board amended the memorandum of understanding, indicating that in this 2023, um, that you would borrow up to $4.6 million, um, contingent upon a few things. And one of those things was that if this congressionally-directed spending funding came through, then that would be deducted from the 2023 borrowing amount. Um, while the, um, federal government has included the funding for this in their federal budget, um, and we've been told that the funding has been designated, it has not yet been obligated, which is an important distinction. So over the past 10 months, we've been working to navigate the, uh, fairly rigorous pro, process to get the funding obligated. Um, last week, we submitted the request to obligate the funds. But, uh, until we get the funding, I will not publicly, um, tell anybody that's, it's, it's a sure thing, because it is a, a very arduous process, and, and at any point, we could, you know, not meet whatever the next requirements are. So while I am hopeful, um, we are not quite there. Um, and so there's a couple, uh, possible outcomes. The first one is that the funding is obligated and we receive it as hoped. Um, the second one is that the funding could be delayed, so even if we get it, there's a possibility that it could be delayed because of a, you know, potential government shutdown, which might mean that we don't have the funding in time to meet our financial obligations. And then the third outcome is that, for whatever reason, that we can anticipate that we don't meet the funding requirements, uh, or can't, can't proceed with that. Um, so I just, um, suggesting that we proceed with, uh, pursuing a short-term borrowing that Lisa's gonna help coordinate, um, just to make sure that we have the funds available to pay our, our final bills, um, until we are able to navigate the rest of the process. Um, we've been going through the process for 10 months, and, and most of the village staff have been helpful in some ways, as many of the board members have been as well. But, you know, until we're there, um, we don't wanna count on, on, on that funding until it's there. If the funding isn't secure, um, the village, um, did approve as part of the memorandum of understanding that you could, um, borrow the remaining million during your regular borrowing, um, next spring, but we're hoping not to have to have a conversation about that. We're hoping that the funding will, um, come through as, as designated but not obligated so far. Are there any questions, or what questions are there for me?
Oh, hearing none. Thank you, Jennifer. Oh, go ahead, Amanda.
So if, and I do think this is on the least likely scenario of the ones you have, but if that funding were to not happen, are we okay borrowing-wise? Is that taken into account in our budgeting?
Uh, the, the extra million was not taken into account as part of our CIP and our debt, uh, analysis this last, uh, cycle that we just went through. So if, 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 in that scenario, if, if we have to borrow the million and pay off the million, as we would normally without the million-dollar grant, um, you know, we'll have to incorporate that into those plans moving forward. And we should know, you know, hopefully, when we get to our regular borrowing cycle in, in February and March next year, where we're at with that, and we can take a look at how things are looking. And, uh, you know, in that worst-case scenario, uh, you know, we, if we look at that analysis, and maybe we don't like what we see, then another project has to be delayed or pushed off or something like that. So we'll just have to evaluate it as, as it comes.
Okay. That's fair. Thank you.
Anyone else? Carleen?
Uh, this is a good time for folks who are watching to call their legislators and say, don't let the government shut down, because that will be one more, uh, delay. And just like we saw with Hofer, delays have these, you know, domino effects that we don't want, and, uh, we ought to be able to prevent.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion, a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Item 10, reports of village officers, department heads, and consultants, information only. No action by the village board will be taken. See reports in the meeting packet. Item A, village administrator report. Questions, comments for Martin? Hearing none. Item B, chief of police report. Notice of revisions to recruitment and selection policy, uniforms slash equipment slash appearance policy, and report on the sex offender registry and communication notification policy. There was, uh, quite a bit, some detail in the packet. Uh, Chief, do you have something to add for us?
Yeah, so, these policy revisions, this is kind of the new way we're doing it now. It's just keeping the village board in the loop. So for the recruitment, the, the change really just has to do with, um, when we're finding out information so quickly in a background of a person we're looking at hiring, and we feel it's very clear that this person will not be a good candidate for hire for our police department, this just allows some very clear language in there that we can disconnect from that, um, pursuit of hiring them. So that's really that one, just that sums up that one up. The next one is, uh, um, it's not incredibly common, but this is certainly a choice I made as a police chief, that I, I want to restrict where officers can wear their tasers. Um, I'm sure many of you've seen, uh, the national news, where they'll show videos where the officer makes a mistake of pulling the taser from, you know, versus the gun, or the gun versus the taser. We certainly wanna do everything we possibly can to make sure that doesn't happen. So that's policy, that's training, that's equipment. Uh, the equipment, our new, uh, tasers, we're moving to our yellow as well. So just, just that much more change to make sure we aren't that department. We never wanna be that department, so, uh, that's what that change has to do with. Uh, lastly, I didn't make any changes to our sex offender registry and communication notification policy. Long enough title for it. Um, but, uh, back in, I believe it was 2009 when I became a detective, I attended a neighborhood watch, uh, meeting, which they're impossible to create anymore, but back then it was more popular. Thinking I was going in to talk about burglaries, stuff from autos, but oh no, this is what, uh, our community at that time wanted to talk about, was what is the Oregon Police Department specifically doing, um, to monitor registered sex offenders in our community? I thought it was an excellent question. Um, as a parent, I have the same for the community I live in. So the policy is in the link. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, we do check twice a year and make contact with, uh, the registered sex offenders in our community, whether they're on supervision or not. We just ask them some questions, check in with them. We do our research, too, to make sure if they are, um, on any sort of conditions, even unrelated to being a registered sex offender, that they're complying. Uh, that way, if we do come across information down the road, we know these individuals well. We've established a positive rapport with them and, um, can certainly address any matters that arise. Uh, for, um, Halloween, uh, it's very clear, so SORP is the Sex Offender Registry Program. Uh, it's very clear that anyone on active supervision cannot participate in any Halloween activities. So, um, Halloween happens every year. We make sure we remind our officers to just monitor that. So while you may have seen the positive photographs on our Facebook website, that was also our officers just out on foot, out of the squad cars, just monitoring, and that also included checking on, uh, those residents specifically. I'm happy to an, and answer any questions on any one of those policies.
Thank you, Chief. Questions? Hearing none, okay, thank you. Uh, let's see, item 10C, Director Public Works Report, Fall Tree Planting Success. In recognition of 2023 downtown planter box volunteers Donna and Gary Dish, Deb Moyer, Eileen Durkin, Nicole Neuss, and Autumn Gals. Jeff is not here tonight, does all, but he was-
Yeah, he, yeah, he had a late conflict. He wasn't able to make the meeting tonight. But, uh, yeah, his memos are there in the, in the packet. If you wanna read them, and if you have any questions, you can certainly reach out to him.
Okay. All right, uh, item 11, announcements and miscellaneous business. Announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events, and miscellaneous business. Village board members may provide brief statements, but no discussion or action of the body may occur. Um, let's take item one first, and that is the very exciting news. Appellatory Waste Systems Mobile App for curb side garbage and recycling pickup reminders flying in packet. Actually, I think some people will find it quite valuable, especially around holidays, so I don't wanna dismiss that. Other announcement comments by village board members. Amanda?
The Transportation Committee, uh, meeting is gonna move. There, there will be notices sent out. You'll see it all later. But we're moving it from the 16th to the 30th because one of our members had a, a conflict. Uh, and since we're only a four-member committee, that means we have to cancel that meeting and move it. So also just a reminder to people, please join committees. I mean, I'm also gonna say, I, I wanted to let people know that, um, you don't have to have any expertise necessarily in, uh, to be on a committee. You have to wanna serve your community and have a basic interest in the topic, and that's it. You, you don't need any special degrees or anything like that. So, um, you know, if you're, if you, that was stopping you before, please apply.
Uh, Carleen?
And I will just, um, piggyback on the please join committees. The DEI committee is now down to, uh, two members. We do have, uh, some recruitment going on in the high school, but we do, did have one member that had to step away because of other things happening in our life right now. So we have, um, a non-student opening as well. So if you're interested in the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, please, uh, actually, I probably need to get you to post that.
Yeah, I was just whispering to Martin.
Yeah.
I'm like, we'll, um, we'll get that out through e-notify in the proper channels, yeah.
Anyone else? Thank you. Item 11B, future agenda items. This item gives village members the opportunity to produce a topic on a future agenda for discussion and our pota, potential action, any future agenda items. Amanda is on defense.
I'm, I'm just re, I'm just trying to remember what, uh, Jill had requested during the public thing. Is there, she wanted to put stuff in the packet, but did she want something on the next?
On the agenda, yeah.
Is that something that we should do, or?
I, I was just going to suggest that we just get more information about that for the next meeting, that if it's not in the park plan, if we could get sort of a, a education on that from the village side.
Well, that sounds like an agenda item.
Yeah, yes, that's, that's-
Right?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, we're still, we're still looking at the parks and rec plan, right?
Yep.
It's still draft, I mean, um, yeah.
Well, will that be on the agenda?
One point of clarification to note, the property has not changed hands yet. So there was kind of inference that the village was gonna retake some property, still the village's property. Um, and we do have a, a draft, um, sale and purchase agreement that we're going back and forth with North Point right now. So when we get to the point that that's kind of at a final draft, we'll have, um, North Point come in, give kind of an update on their concept presentation, as well as discuss that agreement with the board. Um, hopefully that will be the next meeting, just kind of depending on if there's any outstanding review items. So that is definitely something we're planning on, but yeah.
I mean, all, all of these things will be coming to the board over the next two months, but I think the next meeting is probably premature. So the information and the ability to do that stuff is going to happen here within the next probably 60 to 90 days.
Of course, yeah.
So, we can talk about it at the next meeting, but you're gonna have it come at you again, probably the meeting after and the meeting after that.
So is someone willing to reach out to Jill and, and say, you know, we hear you, we're not ignoring you, but it's not gonna be the next meeting because we're not there yet?
Yeah, I can do that.
That would, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, other, is that all right with you, Lynn? You're the one that proposed that.
I, I just have a question, but I don't know that it's appropriate to ask. I just wondered about the, the question she had about if it's not in the park plan, are we limited to creating a park there? So if Tri-North is coming, we're discussing that, but it's also not in the park plan, how does that work?
So sorry, North Point, not-
North Point, Tri-North, all the Norths.
North things, yeah. Yes. So I know it is mentioned in the plan as that's an area where there's kind of a park desert. So it's just from kind of distance from parks. That's one area I know that's mentioned as sort of, um, needed. The other thing is because that land is still, has not been subdivided, and our comprehensive plan actually still shows it as, the new plan will show it as the mid-scale residential, so kind of a, you know, duplexes and up. The land has not been subdivided yet because the engineering is still kind of going on the site to make sure, is it exactly .75 acres that the village would retain for a park? Or is it .76 or whatever that might be? So until that parcel is actually subdivided, the parcel is just gonna have kind of one designation, 'cause it's, well, there's technically three parcels right now, but all three parcels kind of, we'll have to redraw the property line. So anyway, it's definitely something, we would probably amend the park plan when that land is subdivided. And we would say, okay, this is now gonna be park, this is gonna be, um, that residential. You, so it's all to be determined.
Things that will, yeah, be coming at you and for approval, and you'll, you'll, you're gonna have an opportunity to review and take their feedback and make sure that it was incorporated.
It's procedural step thing right now.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Let's see, item 12, closed session business discussion, possible action under Wisconsin statutes. 19.85 sub 1 sub E deliberating or negotiating to purchasing of public properties and investing in public funds or conducting other specified business, public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Attendance is limited to the village board and at its discretion. Any necessary staff, other officers, and other individuals whose presence is necessary for a business is at hand. So we're looking for a motion for that. Carleen and Jason, this is a roll call vote.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Manke?
Yes.
Feshin?
Yes.
And Van Camp?
Yes, we are in closed.
Well, do, do you need to say that you're gonna adjourn from closed session, or is that-
You just did.
Okay.
And we're going into the community.